Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, May 20, 2019, to order. Sutie, if you'll please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the May 20, 2019, regular meeting. We'd like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz is absent for the record. We are honored this evening to have the Sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise?
Sutie, hold. To the right face. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the left face. Sutie, hold. To the face. Dismissed.
Good evening, everyone. Want to welcome you here to Milton City Hall, and as always, it's an honor to have the Sons of the American Revolution here, so thank you for being here tonight. Sutie, if you'll please sound the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of a meeting agenda. Agenda item number 19, 1-1-0.
Hey, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, item 19-110.
Okay, do we have any changes staff or council recommends? Not, okay, we've got a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, Sutie. Okay, next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Sutie, do we have any general public comments?
I do have one from Mr. Gary Jablonsky.
Okay.
Gary Jablonsky, 268 O'Grassview Drive, Milton. I'd like to say that I think the city should consider paving the road, Hopewell Road, north from Bell Park to Hamby Road. The city seems to have been able to find money to pave Francis Road from Highway 9 West, but I've been told that there's no money to pave Hopewell Road. Please reconsider. Second item, is there any way that the city can try to engage themselves or partner with someone to have a recycling center? There's a recycling center run in Roswell, but for non-Roswell residents, you have to pay for things like refrigerators, tires, et cetera. So I'd really like to see some sort of recycling program founded by the city of Milton. That's all.
Thank you very much. Is that all, general public comment, Sutie?
Yes, sir. That's all.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. If you'll please call those items.
First item is approval of the April 22, 2019, city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 19, 1-1-1. Next is approval of the following subdivision plats. Dennis and Alexandra Hall, landlots 251 and 254, 16170 Belford Drive. This is a combo plat, combined parcels, one lot, 2.343 total acres, .42 lots per acre. Next is Birmingham and Wood, landlots 631, at 14795 Wood Road, combo plat, combined parcels, one lot, 2.522 total acres, .39 lots per acre. Agenda item number 19, 1-1-2.
Okay, I have a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's you now, the city. Okay, if we can move on to reports and presentations. Sutie, if you'll please call the first item.
Our first item this evening is a proclamation recognizing Memorial Day 2019. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, it's an honor for me to present this proclamation, and once I read it, I'd like to present it to the Sons of the American Revolution if they would join me and the council afterward. I have a Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas, Memorial Day was first officially proclaimed on May 5, 1868, by General John Logan in his General Order Number 11, and in 1968 by the Act of Congress, it was determined that the holiday would be observed on the last Monday in May. And whereas, from the opening battles of the American Revolution through the turmoil of the Civil War, to World War I, World War II, Korea and Vietnam, to the Persian Gulf, and today's operations in the war on terror in Afghanistan, Iraq, and all around the world, the members of our military have built a tradition of honorable and faithful service. And whereas, as we observe Memorial Day, we remember the more than 1 million Americans who have died to preserve our freedom, the more than 140,000 citizens who were prisoners of war, and all those who were declared missing in action. We also honor veterans for their dedication to America and their sacrifice. And whereas, we have the honor and privileges of living in a free country, and Georgia has a rich history of great leaders who died fighting for our great nation. Today, all who wear the uniform of the United States are serving at a crucial hour in history, and each has answered a great call to serve our nation on the front lines of freedom. Let us pray for the safety and strength of our troops, and for God's blessing on them and their families, and those who have lost loved ones. And whereas, on this Memorial Day, we honor the fallen soldiers and their commitment to our country, and their legacy of patriotism and sacrifices of the many men and women who answered the nation's call to duty, and fought with honor and valor, and in the end gave the ultimate sacrifice to safeguard the rights of all Americans. And whereas, by giving their lives in this cause of freedom, these heroes have protected and inspired all Americans, and we are truly grateful for their sacrifice. And whereas, the citizens of Milton join with people across the nation in remembrance of those who died while courageously serving their country during war. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, Georgia hereby dedicate and proclaim Monday, May 27, 2019, as Memorial Day in the city of Milton, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. This is given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this 20th day of May 2019. And if council would join me and the Sons of the American Revolution, please step forward.
Actually, this way, hello. I'm coming. I'm coming. Right here, one, two, three. Let's do that one more time. One, two, three, smile. We're good, thank you.
Again, it's always a pleasure and an honor for the city of Milton to have the Sons of the American Revolution here. All right, Sutie, if you'll please sound the next item.
Our next item this evening is presentation regarding Providence Park Trails. Mr. Jim Craig.
Very excited to come up here and talk with you about a lot of the work that we have been doing. As you may recall, last year, we received multiple grants for work at Providence Park, and so would like to tell you tonight is talk to you about the current grant timeline. Get your support on a discussion of the trail surfaces that we think will work best for Providence, and that we have a really good story to tell you about a minimal tree impact in implementing this trail process. Loud here on the screen, but as we said, we started it out, we were one of 19 approved out of 51 applicants for the Recreation Trail Grant. We got into a contract last October, but if you look at that fourth item down, must have a first invoice submitted by August 2019. Time is tight. We have done a lot of work on this, but in order to keep the grant going, we have to have a contractor onboard. We have to have them start work, issue an invoice, and cash the check as proof that we are doing our part. So we've done a lot of work behind the scenes to try and create what we think is going to be a great trail program for you, and that's why we're looking for your support on it. This is the current conditions at Providence Park, and what we're trying to do with these trails is get people to be able to get down to the beautiful lake we have, let them enjoy the scenery, and here's a couple pictures from Providence Park. And the purpose of this particular trail is to do so in an ADA acceptable format. The drawing in the middle represents the two trails that exist today. The blue trail on the east side of the park is not part of this discussion at all. The red trail on the west side of the park is how it exists today. Now, I'm going to ask you to take a good hard look at this. I'm sorry, but the next slide can be visually confusing, so I want to try and help explain what we're looking at here. So again, blue and red are current, and we're not going to talk about the blue at all. So let's take a look at what we're proposing. Here you see, again, the blue and the red as they exist, but we now have, for your visual purposes here, a west trail we have depicted in orange, a central trail we have depicted in green, and an east trail depicted in black. The combination of these three trail segments, working along with, you can see the white line where the black stops, and the future central trail, there's a white path there. That's the existing driveway. So what we're looking to do is have as minimal an impact as we can while still creating a fully accessible ADA trail. So the orange trail is going to be a four-foot wide trail, and we have proposed to use asphalt, and we're going to talk about why of these proposals. The central trail, we are proposing to be eight-foot wide, and would be a combination of asphalt and boardwalk. And the reason we're looking at boardwalk is because down by the lake, there is a flood zone that is continuously wet. And then the black trail, we are proposing a combination of porous and non-porous surfaces that would connect ultimately to the asphalt of the existing road that's at Providence Park. Before I move on, is everybody comfortable with what we're trying to depict here? If you take a good look, you'll see, one of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to achieve the goal of creating an ADA acceptable trail. We're also trying to take into consideration our neighbors. The current red trail gets right up next to the fence of the existing neighbor. We want to pull that trail in and give that neighbor his privacy. And we also want to have as little impact as we can on the land. All right? So here's the current conditions. These are actual pictures from the park, and as you can see, the trails, here's on the left, there's a trail that was laid out by one of our hard-working Boy Scouts, and you can see it roughly four feet in width. Also, on the right, you can see a trail where a scout put in one of the 13 benches that are at Providence Park. In our discussions with the contractor, we're working with a state-approved contractor, one of the conditions we put on there is that if a bench were to come off the trail, in other words, the trail moves, we want that bench moved to where it would be active part of the trail. All right? So we said we wanted to talk about surfaces, so let's talk about surfaces. A non-porous surface, of course, we have to be concerned about stormwater management issues. There's two options, concrete and asphalt. What we heard loud and clear through the master plan process when this was discussed, that the community rejects concrete as a trail at Providence Park, and we want to honor that. Another problem with concrete is because it is so hard, it is susceptible to cracking as trees grow and roots develop. The use of asphalt has been a best-practice initiative done by multiple parks that are doing trails because asphalt will flex. It will flex, and it's easier to repair if we need to. It allows trees to grow, and this is the surface that we submitted to DNR last year when we proposed this, we proposed asphalt. As far as the porous surfaces, there's two options that we looked at. DNR encourages us greatly, though they don't mandate, but they push very hard to try and use porous surfaces as part of your trail construction. So we've taken a look at crushed shale options, and also porous rubber. We ourselves were not fully aware of the porous rubber until DNR said, hey, we're using it right now up at Amacola Falls, go take a look at it. And it's working very well. In fact, this picture is right from Amacola Falls. In looking at these two options, it became obvious to us that crushed shale creates a maintenance, ongoing maintenance situation. First, when the shale is, when the crushed shale is first put down, it looks very pretty, but over time, the fines of the soil start to come up and wash out, and then the surface gets harder and rockier. Also, it is prone to wash out from storm waters. And while part of what we're trying to do is minimize the impact of storm water, the reality is, the property goes downhill, the water's going to flow. So we believe the crushed shale will have a greater impact of maintenance than the porous rubber. For the flood zone, we have a picture here from a park in Texas, though honestly, I could have thought this might have been perhaps somewhere in Alpharetta. But boardwalk is used in areas where you have continuous wetness, and what it does is it allows the continuous movement of the water at the ground, but it keeps people from walking in mud, and it maintains the ADA accessibility. There's approximately an 80-foot section down close to the lake that we would have to put down boardwalk in order to maintain ADA accessibility. So that's where we're looking at. So this is kind of a summary, and I'm going to use the mouse here to draw, but again, we're now looking at the starting point here, an orange loop that would bring us around. As you can see, there's markings of benches, a couple benches that would have to be moved, and then it connects to the central trail, which comes straight down around the left of where the former lodge had been. And then this section right here, if you can see it, this section here, that's where we have to put the boardwalk. And then this next portion here, what we're calling the east side of the trail, it would come up here, connects to the existing driveway, and then brings you in a full loop. The trail on the left, the orange trail, would be five-foot wide. On the central trail, and then the eastern trail, they would be eight-foot wide. Here's what I'm saying, what I'm calling the good news. One of the things we've done, as we have field engineered this, yes, we know there are dead trees that will have to come down for the safety of those walking on the trail, but if there's a tree that's over six inches in caliper, we're going to go around it. We'll go around it. We will have to remove, in order to implement this plan, a total of 24 trees that are six inches in diameter or less, and in working with the Comdev Department, we have confirmed that the removal of these trees will not affect the canopy percentage as defined by the city of Milton right now. We believe this is a win, and this is what we're talking about, a minimal impact at Providence. So why are we doing this? Well, this is just to remind you that we've also received grants for a new bathroom, which would be at the parking lot, and a new pier. And this is, the picture down at the bottom is meant to be a depiction of it, but obviously the water isn't quite like shown in the picture. But we do have Bob Bishemi's renderings of what these drawings would look like. Bob has done a marvelous job working at this project, helping us with the engineering, fieldwalking it, and we believe we have a project here that can be achieved in the timeframe and in the budget that we have had. And with that, I'll open up to any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Jim? Joe?
So Jim, could you flip back to the, one of the pictures where you have the trails?
Okay, give me a minute. Is this one acceptable?
Yeah, this one's fine.
Okay, yes, sir.
So the new trails that we're going to add, so exclude the blue and the red.
Yes, sir.
The orange, green, and black. Each of those trails has some kind of different characteristic to it in terms of its accessibility, or are they all equivalent from that point of view?
They are all considered equivalent in terms of ADA accessibility.
Okay. All right, so, and I know you're right, it's sort of hard to see how these connect.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. So the orange one goes down and actually sort of connects to the red, or potentially connects to the red coming back?
Mm-hmm.
Because since these are, the accessible characteristics is the important part of this, I guess it's the green that really connects with, huh? I just want to make sure, because these are all spurs, they're not loops, so they go out in one direction, they don't really have a return.
But when they're all connected together, you have a complete loop.
Okay, that's difficult to see. Okay, I got it.
Okay.
So I just want to be clear, so Jim, the red trail that goes closest to the property line, that would not exist anymore, is that right?
The plan would be to abandon that back to nature.
Okay.
We could do some subtle things such as taking some tree trunks or things like that, and starting to block those particular paths and directing people more back onto the new trails, and let nature take them over.
I just want to make sure. And then on the porous rubber, so that's accessible, and the shale is too?
The shale is considered accessible, and because it crushes down and is, can be used for people in a wheelchair, or people pushing a stroller. The porous rubber is smoother, and it's softer, and it's got a kind of a little bouncy feel to it, too.
And does it wash away, or is it, does it, is it solid?
The porous rubber is solid, it does not wash away, it's poured in place, it's a, it's a, sorry, it's a, just had a hearing today, I'm sorry. It's poured in place, and we, there's videos on how this product worked, when DNR told us about it, they actually have a video where they show people just pouring water through this rubber base, and it just soaks it right in.
Okay, anybody else? Rick?
I like the idea of the porous rubber. I've walked on those trails, it is, it's comfortable to walk on. Plus, is this recycled material also?
It is a combination of recycled material and recycled tires and things like that, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you for the presentation, Jim.
Mayor, could I jump in before we close?
Absolutely, Steve.
Do we have a cost, because we need a decision tonight on what surface you'd like us to go with. Staff wants to go with the porous rubber, but we're here to make sure that whatever surface we use is something that's in line with what the council's wishes are. Can you also provide council the differential in cost between the crushed gravel and the porous rubber?
Okay, yes. Bob? Can I, let me get the date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bob Buscemi, City Architect. Yeah, when we priced it out, we priced out the asphalt and the rubber based. And the rubber is actually about twice the price of the asphalt. So we limited the amount of linear footage of the rubber base to the black trail. The, as far as the shale, the crushed shale component, I'm drawing a blank, I apologize. Yeah, I did not price out the shale because the shale, when we looked into it, the shale was so maintenance intensive that we just said, geez, you know, we really don't want to place a product down there that's just going to be an expense, a future expense and an ongoing expense to the city to constantly maintain it and to keep it up. So we priced out the asphalt and the rubber.
So to clarify, one option would be do all asphalt. The other option is to put the rubber in some places, which again, since it's twice as much as asphalt, you did not include that everywhere.
That's right.
Do you have, can you give us an idea what the delta would be between the difference of it being all asphalt versus how much more with the, some specified amount of rubber that you're going to use?
Okay, so on the central trail, it came out to be about $50,000 for the asphalt and roughly $100,000 for the rubber, if you know the numbers. I had the black trail in rubber came out to $70,000 and the orange trail came out to $107,000 and that's a four-foot wide asphalt trail. And that price was really there because the four-foot wide trail has to be hand installed. You can't have a machine install a four-foot trail. You just don't have a machine that's four-foot wide. So all of that work will be done by hand.
I'm still in our clip, but Joe, go ahead, you've got a question.
So I get the fact that initial cost, rubber is more expensive than asphalt. Do we have a maintenance associated with that? Because, I mean, we sort of went through this before with field, so putting in an artificial turf field is much more expensive on the front end, but you get more use and it's less maintenance.
So the amount of maintenance on the rubber trail and the asphalt trail would be about the same. There's really no maintenance on it, they just put them down and they'll last.
The biggest difference we were looking at was the amount of maintenance of a porous crushed shale versus a porous rubber. The crushed shale, which is going to be continuing, ongoing, I tried to come up with an estimate as to what it would take to maintain the crushed shale, but...
So then the additional thing other than the cost is we got to count one is porous and one is not. So asphalt, it's going to have water runoff, we're going to have some stormwater issues.
Yes, that is correct.
Whereas the rubber, we don't have to worry about that.
That's correct.
And the way we have it right now, the way we have it distributed through the park, I'm balancing on the cost estimate, the way we have it. So if we said, oh, we want all rubber, then I'm going to be probably, I'll be over budget on what we've...
So to clarify, you've included some rubber and keeping it within the original budget.
That's correct.
Again, you've...
Yeah, it was a little bit of a...
You cut some of it out to keep... So Laura, did you have a question?
No, that, well, going, that was my question, the maintenance. I'm assuming you've chosen to use the rubber closer to the water? How do you, how did you go about deciding where to?
Well, the rubber portion, firstly, the amount of linear footage and then that black trail that's allocated is really almost in existence today. There's no trees that need to be removed, it's a relatively flat portion of site. So that would be most conducive to putting the rubber on it. The other, the central trail, of course, has grade issues, so when you stop putting the rubber on there, you can have washout and whatnot. So we're trying to, we're trying to maintain it so that when we install it, that we'll have a long life cycle on this.
Okay, Joe. So when all rubber, we're over budget?
We'd be over budget.
By?
By quite a bit.
Okay.
It would be, it would be the difference, it'd be like 107, you'd be doing twice of that, it would be...
Yeah, we'd only be like 500.
We'd be about 500,000 versus 360.
360.
So, but the way you've got it figured is a balance that you think would work well?
The way I have it figured out right now is we're well balanced, it's, we're within budget and we're getting about, it's a $200,000 grant and then we're putting in the balance.
And, but you've got it balanced aesthetically, environmentally, and durability.
That's correct.
Okay, quick question. So, so the rubber is the black and the orange, that's within budget, correct?
The black is the rubber.
Okay, so the orange is asphalt?
The orange is asphalt and it's four feet wide.
Okay, so the black, so it's $70,000 is the total?
Of the black, of the rubber.
Okay.
That's correct.
So to answer your question, Steve, we need some direction on if the council's okay going with as presented, as presented, which was within budget, the original budget we have, we've got the $200,000 grant and we pay the difference versus if the council wanted to go to use more rubber or use less, is that...
Right, the total original budget was 364, which is what I'm working on.
Before anything was going to get laid out there, I wanted, especially rubber, even though it is, it is a porous material, or even the asphalt for that matter, over more of a gravel type substance, I wanted to make sure there was some type of public opportunity for people to speak on it and for you to think about it. What's been presented to you today is the budget was based on what we presented, but I wasn't sure how you'd feel about gravel or the crushed slate versus the rubber versus the asphalt. That's what I wanted to make sure that you were okay with, the way we were going forward with it, or if you wanted to see a different mix of things.
You know, I like the balance with, you know, longevity, use, ease of use and lower maintenance costs in the future versus the shale, but everybody else? Rick?
Just one question, the boardwalk down by the water, is that included in this budget? That this is the total build out of the trail system as outlined, including the combination of the three different types of materials?
That's correct.
Yes, that is included.
Okay, and I guess to answer the mayor's question, I'm in agreement, too, because if we get into a lot of maintenance, the shale may be cheaper initially, but if we're going back there with the amount of rain we've had the last two years with the topography there, I think we'd end up costing more in the long run and make it less usable.
Laura?
And just, it just seems like the ADA accessibility with the shale is going to be questionable because of the pictures you showed us. So if that's what our grant is based on and that's what we're trying to accomplish is to have this park accessible, I'm definitely in favor of that.
Okay, anybody else?
I guess really the only question is, do we want to do asphalt or rubber on just the black portion and that's what, an extra $35,000? Is that safe to say?
That would be correct.
So that's kind of what we're...
If we ran asphalt on the black portion, it would be about $35,000 more to do the rubber, but I'm still within budget doing the rubber.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
The DNR wants more.
Okay. And this is not, I know this is a formal decision, but it's direction and you'll bring it back.
Part of the grant application was DNR wanted a portion of the trail to be porous, so that's why we're introducing the rubber. So we're meeting that standard of the grant.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Sudi, our next item, first presentation, will you please sound that out?
This item is consideration of an ordinance of the city of Milton, Georgia to amend Sections 4-239 and 4-380 related to Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia, Agenda Item Number 19113.
Okay, do I have a motion on the first presentation?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the first presentation as read.
Second.
Do I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Moore, with a second from Councilmember Longoria? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearing. Sudi, if you'll please sound the item.
This item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Matilda's 850 Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia 30004, Agenda Item Number 19114. And I do have one public comment.
Okay, and just before a public comment, I want to allow Councilmember Bentley to make a statement.
Yeah, I need to state that Mr. Mills, who was the owner of Matilda's, the venue, was involved in my campaign strategically and financially. So in my effort to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I'm going to remain recused as per the Milton Ethics Code, Section 2-861B.
Okay. All right. Sudi, go ahead, you say you have a public comment?
Yes, sir, this is from Ms. Judy Birds.
Hello, Judy Birds, 1165 Green Drive, Milton, Georgia. It is about one and a half mile from the venue, I've lived there for 12 years. I am in support of the issuance of this BYOB business license. I would prefer they operate within the laws and rules of the city rather than violate them, so I would request that you approve them. I do have one question and a couple of remarks. I have tried to search to find Matilda's. They are not listed in the Georgia Secretary of State as an LLC, as a corporation, as a C corp, they're not listed with them, so I'm wondering if that is just a brand name and if so, should the license be issued to the potters if they're operating it as a sole proprietorship? Because I could not, I have been searching for a while for them, cannot find them. So, couple clarifications I would like to make sure are made. One of the clarifications is, is that this BYOB license is for the property. The property is not a open container, that the people can take it and walk through the Birmingham overlay as part of our open container, so I'd like that clarified. And also, too, because we fudged the lines a little bit of what is this property and that property on the permit, that this license only applies to the property at 850, not to the license, not as a license for BYOB at the restaurant next to it, which has a different operator, so I would like that clarification as well as clarification of what is Matilda's? Thank you.
Thank you. Should we have any other public comments?
That's all, sir.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on it, but have Bernard do the presentation now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have a bring your own beverage application for Matilda's and I was looking to see if I had the occupational tax certificate here with me and it is made out to Matilda's, so I will have to go back to the original forms to see how that was applied for. The contact person is Ms. Mary Potter and she is the person responsible and she also has a registered agent that would also be held responsible secondarily.
And just to clarify, so you can confirm that?
Well, I'm going, I can go back and look, Ms. Birds has an open records request in and we are going through legal to make sure there's nothing on there that we need to redact and then we'll get that information over to her so we can see exactly how the applicant applied, but I'm sorry, did not have that with me this evening.
No, no, I'm not expecting, but I'm just saying you can confirm that later.
Oh, yes, sir.
To make sure that when it's issued, it's in the right name.
Yes, and they are doing business as Matilda's and I will make sure if they have any other name or if it's a sole proprietorship, they're allowed, they wouldn't be on that register with the state.
Okay.
And so this evening is for the bring your own beverage for 850, that address only. And they are looking, this is for any place of business that is open to the public and is allowing them to bring their own beer or wine, so it's excluding distilled spirits. And they have applied, they have met all of the requirements of the law and we are proposing, recommending approval.
Okay, are there any questions on that? Joe?
So, help me understand something, Bernard, because I get the idea that the license is for Matilda's to not serve alcohol, but to allow their patrons to bring beer or wine. Does it require, does the license imply some kind of enforcement qualification or quality to Matilda's to operate? In other words, do they have to be ensuring that people are only bringing beer and wine if they're bringing alcohol on the premise?
So there is a requirement for the owner and all the managers to apply for a pouring permit and the pouring permit does have stipulations, regulations, ensuring that the people running the establishment are keeping in a lookout for the fact that no one's overly intoxicated and things like that, so there is a parameter level, they're not corking, they can charge a corking fee and they can cork, they have not told us they were going to do so, but they are not to sit out there and serve open or do any of those things, but they are supposed to be keeping a watchful eye to ensure that no one is past the intoxication level of being able to drive.
Okay, I'm smiling because they need a pouring permit to not pour. Is that what you're saying?
Right, yes, I know, it's, I had to read it a few times to make sure I brought that with me tonight, so.
Okay.
But yes, sir, it's kind of the expectation that someone's in charge.
All right.
No, it's like, I know that doesn't make sense, but actually having a pouring permit, they have to go through training.
Right, no, I get it, I get it, I've never heard it said that way, so it was sort of funny.
Okay. Another question, the ordinance calls for, this is up till 9:00 PM, they're allowed to carry into the facility, onto the property?
That's correct, so anyone entering after 9:00 would not be able to bring in their cooler or their drinks or from any other location.
Okay, all right.
Quick question, and then when the speaker mentioned about an open container wall?
Yeah.
We have that for Crab Apple, but not for Birmingham, right?
We actually have it for Birmingham. There is a deer field, a Birmingham, and a Crab Apple open container district. The open container district includes, ready for you, the mixed-use C1, T4, T4 restricted, T5, T6, and adjacent CX transit zones, so it has some limitations. Seven Nigger Barn Grill would be included in there and they could bring their beer or wine from there at this time, distilled spirits would just be excluded unless that mapping was changed.
Okay, Joe?
Okay, so you answered the question, there were a couple of questions that we wanted to get addressed, so we talked about who is Matilda's, we're going to confirm that.
I'm going to confirm.
You talked about the idea that the permit to walk around with your beverage, once you've opened it, that's, that's not part of this property?
So a portion, a portion of this property is C1 and the other portion...
That little bit that gets carved off?
But so now with the bring your own beverage, you could take your beer or wine from the open container and it would be your beverage and you could bring it in? You just couldn't bring distilled spirits at this time? So...
Okay.
The other open container districts are like, you can have your margarita, your drink, and you can bring it throughout those zones, this would be like a cutoff for hard liquor at this time, the way it's written.
So they don't have a license today?
They have a temporary license, they operate under all of our businesses when they come in. We have a provision for them to get all their ducks in a row and operate.
We've had two events there, I think, is that correct?
One, I believe, right, no, two?
No.
Okay, sorry.
So have we had any issues with alcohol at either one of these events?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so, all right, cool, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Rick?
And part of that, the ruling or the law that we have is, is it a certain plastic container or something? They can't just take like a regular glass from a restaurant or something?
So the open container district has container rules, plastic or paper, bring your own beverage does not, so they could have a cooler with a couple of bottles in there, it could only be wine or beer and they would have to discard them appropriately, they, you know, but there's no rules against that.
The ability to carry something in open, basically with that overlay, that ties into the restrictions that we have in those areas.
Then you're bringing in your cup.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I will have a motion on this.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19-114.
Second.
Do I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Jameson with a second from...
Did you say deny?
No.
For approval, with a second from Council.
Do you want me to, do you want me to re-say it?
Yeah.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19-114.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Jameson, I have a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous with Councilmember Bentley recusing herself and not voting.
And I will get the answer on the establishment for you guys tomorrow, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we don't have any items under our zoned agenda or unfinished business, so Sudi, if you'll please sound the new business item.
This item is consideration of a resolution requesting sales tax information from the Georgia Department of Revenue pursuant to OCGA Section 48... from the Georgia Department of Revenue pursuant to OCGA Section forty-eight two fifteen D one, and naming a designated officer for all related purposes, Agenda Item Number nineteen one one five, Ms. Stacy English.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I have before you tonight is a resolution that the Department of Revenue requires to get a list of the businesses that pay sales tax within our jurisdiction. This is something that we can use to compare with our business licenses database, so that we can see if there are anybody that may have a business license, may not be showing that the sales taxes are being appropriated properly, or that they may be paying sales tax and don't have an occupational tax certificate. The one thing that we can't really do with this list is use it to go after businesses that are on their list, but not on ours. We have to notify them, to tell them that this is what's going on, so that they can contact the businesses, but there is a private information that is covered within this resolution that we aren't allowed to actually use the information for us to go and contact businesses. It's just a way for us to just check the information and make sure that we have the proper businesses operating properly in the city of Milton. And we also have to appoint one person, one point of contact for the city of Milton, and I'm using Bernadette, I don't know if I told you Bernadette, she's in here, but she is the point of contact for the city of Milton since she is the Finance Director.
Okay, are there any questions based on that? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move, we approve Agenda Item Number nineteen dash one one five.
Second.
Do I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria for approval, with a second from Councilmember Bentley? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi?
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any council reports or anything you want to update, Councilwoman, Laura?
I'd just like to thank the Milton Equestrian Committee, they did a great job this weekend and had the Meet the Neighbors event, it was well attended, it was awesome, it was, you know, an opportunity for the community to come out and get to know the horse, the Milton Equestrian community, and then also, they had a lot of vendors there, and so they put a lot of time and effort into it, it was very well attended, so thank you to them.
Okay, anybody else? I'll move on staff, we've got a couple of staff reports, and then we'll wrap up to work into our work session.
Community outreach is up first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, it's great to see y'all again. Since I last reported, a couple of just professional development things that I've been allowed to do was take an advanced public engagement class, which was fantastic. We learned to identify some obstacles to public engagement, ways to define problems in engaging, and how to get the engagement right around those problems to help solve them, so I look forward to implementing that, some of those problem-solving ideas with Shannon and others. I also started the Leadership North Fulton class for this year. Our last session was yesterday, I'm sorry, last Thursday. And it was a great experience held by the Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce groups. Our groups within the class were selected by our strengths, and then we chose a project with a local nonprofit to assist, ours was North Fulton Community Charities. We helped them come up with some solutions, gathering feedback on how to make their thrift shop perform better. They're facing some challenges, and so we worked with them to create some surveys and engage with their customers, and it was successful in helping them solve some of those problems that they're having. So, also in February, so both of those started in the winter. Also in the winter, of course, we had the mayor's run. A total of twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars was raised by the mayor's run, after expenses seventy-five hundred were donated to the families with children who are suffering from cancer to help them with expenses. So, along with our partners at North Port Pediatrics, Dr. Greg Cabrera, we made a pretty big difference with that relatively small event, but well attended. Another new event we had in the early spring, well, at Easter, was the Community Egg Hunt. It was a joy to partner with Stone Creek Church and Cambridge High School to bring that on. Stone Creek made it a part of their City Serve volunteer project. They do two City Serve volunteer events a year. As a result of that, we had about two hundred and fifty volunteers at that event, which was just enough to make an egg hunt successful, and it was. We had about three thousand attendees at that, and so we will certainly do that again. Partnering with all those different community partners made it a great success. Rock for Rescues, another great community partnership, was April twenty-seventh. Well, the culmination of a season of events ended with our music festival on Crab Apple Road on April twenty-seventh. We had about ten thousand people there, the financials from that and how much will go to each of the five charities is still coming in, because they had another event yesterday at the Vista Room in Decatur with music and arts students, Music and Arts is a Milton business, and they have youth musicians, and they all performed at that charity event yesterday for Rock for Rescues. So those, the financials for that are still coming in, but some of the goals we met were, of course, increased community engagement, exposure to Milton as a destination for shopping, eating, and entertainment. Some attendees, vendors, musicians, and even some of the charities had not been to Milton as it's developed, as it is developed now, and we're very impressed and eager to come back. And then, obviously, increasing awareness for charities. So not just financial donations to them, but people who can volunteer for them, people who are now aware of them. Speaking of aware, Atlanta Wildlife and Rescue is one of those, and so they rescue wildlife. They're one of the only places that do that, that can rehab owls or raccoons or other wildlife, and we've made a great community connection with them. So increasing those community connections and awareness was a big part of Rock for Rescues. You all may have seen Sid Verma was our intern for the past couple of months. He did a fantastic job in helping with Rock for Rescues. He also had been, years ago, when he was twelve, the recipient of a proclamation from city council, which is how he got involved in the city, and then came back as our intern. So he's off to USC to change the world, I'm sure. He's a great kid. As far as outreach, so there's some of the things that are going on as far as outreach, some Better Together volunteer opportunities we've taken part in this year. We helped at Creative Enterprise, Creative Enterprise is a special needs day program that is based in Forsyth County, but assists people regionally, including Milton. Several Milton families have family members who attend there. They completed their Adopt a Road, they helped with Rock for Rescues, and are assisting with the book trail behind the Milton Library, which has a new book. We hosted the Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School Field Trip, thank you to everybody who assisted with that. They got to meet their elected officials, they get taught by city staff, they did a tour of the facility, they had an engineering project with Sarah Leaders. One of the groups came up with, when we ran out of room for transportation, they went underground, so get ready for that when they get elected. And they also had a mock council meeting where they approved a city, a brand-new city swimming pool at the cost of about four million dollars. So, even afterwards explained where that money comes from, but it also had all the bells and whistles, so. But they enjoyed getting to talk through that, we had people who spoke for it, people who spoke against it, we had council, we had a mock mayor, they all got to vote, it was, it's a great time. And it really is sort of an introduction to city government. Our Citizen Government Academy Class, Class Three, graduated just a couple of weeks ago. And then, as Laura mentioned, our final thing going on is the Milton Equestrian Committee hosted back in February at Birmingham Park Cleanup Day, but this weekend, Meet the Neighbors with twenty vendors. And they, the vendors were selling or providing information on all sorts of things, from Mustang Rescue to Equine Veterinary Services to homemade horse treats. There was nothing missing, so, and we had a fantastic demonstration from the fire department with the Tea Layer Rescue, everybody was incredibly impressed by that and didn't know all the statistics behind it, you know, how often we have to use it and how rare it is for a city to have something that beneficial, and that we assist other communities when they need it. So it was great, I fully anticipated it being a yearly event and growing in leaps and bounds. Upcoming, we have Memorial Day next Monday, our Independence Day Walking Parade, June twenty-ninth, and then the rest of the summer we'll be planning Crab Apple Fest, which is October fifth, and then Carving and Crab Apple is October twentieth. And then it's Christmas, if you can believe it, so, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Courtney. Okay, community development?
Hi, just giving you a brief overview of the various projects which are going on in the Community Development Department. Number one is the status update of the planning of the former Milton Country Club. Currently, we are finalizing the draft master plan of the country club, and we will be presenting the city council this final draft in your July work session. As we know, there is an active part, active part and the passive part of this former country club property. We are almost done with the planning of the passive part, and we have already incorporated the comments which we received from the city council in your, from your February work session. For the active part, we are, we have sent out a survey for the, for the community and the neighborhood, because we wanted to know more about, we wanted to know more from the community, what type of programs they are looking for from the, for the clubhouse. So the survey went out on May first, and the deadline for that survey is on May twenty-second. So once we receive that survey results, we will be incorporating those survey results into the planning of the clubhouse, and we will be presenting this to you in your July work session. BGA meeting, tomorrow we have a BGA meeting, and there is one item on the agenda, that is the one three nine two five Higood Road. There's a lot of community interest in this application. The structure was previously used as a covered horse riding ring arena, but the new owner has put some concrete floors, and he has also enclosed that horse riding ring arena. So this is the one application that will be in front of the BGA. We will be also providing the BGA the training on the form-based codes, how to implement the form-based codes. For the rezoning and the use permit, we have not received any new applications for the rezoning or for the use permit. Tree canopy ordinance, we have completed the first round of stakeholder meetings for the tree preservation ordinance. We are currently finalizing the draft, and we will be presenting that draft to the Stakeholders Committee in the mid of June, I think the meeting is on June thirteenth. Then after the Stakeholders Committee is comfortable, we plan to present an overview to the Planning Commission, and we plan to present this, the tree preservation ordinance to the city council in your June or in July work session. And then we will go from there with the adoption of this tree preservation ordinance. That's it from me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, police, Chief Austin?
Greetings, Mayor, members of council. Looking at our traffic safety initiatives, we are currently down three percent in accidents from this time last year, and the crime front overall, crime remains low, and we're currently down nine percent from where we were last year. We had a great opportunity last week to connect with our community during twenty nineteen Police Week activities. Saturday, we had Coffee with a Cop over here at Laurel and May. Monday, we had a Protect Your Privacy shredding event, and this year we were able to fill up an entire truck, so that was documents that will not be used for identity theft, so that was, we were very pleased with that outcome. Opioid and Illicit Drug Seminar over at the, at Stone Creek, which was hosted by Tonya Smith, who is the founder and current director of Kenneth Saul State University's Office of Victim Services. So this is an area of expertise of hers, and she was able to offer quite a bit of good information to our community. Our Back to Blue Blood Drive yielded twenty-nine units of blood. And then we rounded out Friday with a Peace Officers Memorial Service. We started the event here last year in Milton, and Alpharetta took the event this year and hosted, and did a very fine job, it was very well attended, as we commemorated the six officers that lost their lives in Georgia last year, as well as one hundred and sixty-three officers killed in the line of duty nationwide. We rounded out Friday evening with an award ceremony in this room, where we celebrated the accomplishments of the police department during the last year. And I would just like to thank the city and our community for allowing us the opportunity to recognize, to celebrate, to commemorate, and connect during this very special time. It was, it was a great week, and we really enjoy the opportunity to connect with our citizens. That concludes my report, if you have any questions?
Question, Rick?
Is there? Not a question, but a comment, I just wanted to thank, thank the police for your support, and also this past Sunday, just yesterday, the police escort with the Milton Memorial Markers for deceased veterans, which now we see lined along Deerfield Parkway, out along Birmingham Highway, Crab Apple Road, and then Heritage Walk. We put up six hundred and four markers, and I just wanted to say we really appreciate you guys being involved with all the volunteers that actually put out the crosses, because it makes it safe when we're out there for a few hours doing it. And I also wanted to publicly thank Bill Luss for continuing with that program and continuing to actually honor our fallen veterans within the city of Milton.
Thank you, we're more than happy to help.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. If there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion moved.
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. In just a couple of minutes, we'll start a special call.